About six thirty, so we'll start the regular meeting of Starbucks City Council for June thirteenth. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, every God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And Joan, if you'd call the roll, please.
Mayor Swenson?
Here.
Counselor Gorder, absent. Counselor Tate?
Here.
Counselor Buckel?
Here.
Counselor Hanson?
Here.
Okay. Next, the first item on the agenda is to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion or questions regarding the agenda?
I was gonna add one thing to the agenda. The, a bid for repairing the wastewater plant roof?
Okay, is that under new business, or?
Um, sure, new business.
Any other discussion or questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the amended agenda.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Tate to approve the consent agenda, seconded by Councilwoman Hanson, I mean Buckle. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is anyone before the council, and we have Mark and Wendy Quinn here this evening to discuss something, I don't know if you wanted to say anything. No? That's a switch.
My name's Robert Heebner, I'm with the Cyrus Fire Department, and we are looking for approval from the council to allow lawful charitable gambling in the tavern when it opens of paper pull tabs and electronic pull tabs.
Okay. Is this the only charitable gambling you're proposing in the?
At this time, the Starbucks auxiliary, fire auxiliary decided to not do it at this time.
Okay, so it'll be strictly the Cyrus Fire Department?
Yeah, because they didn't want to have to put a machine in there, because otherwise we'd have two conflicting boxes going on.
Mm-hmm, okay. Is there any other questions? Anybody has? Okay. Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to decide on that issue, on the request for a gambling permit?
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
One second, Dad.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Tate to approve the application for a gambling permit for the Cyrus Fire Department Relief Association at the tavern, seconded by Councilwoman Hanson. Any further questions or discussion?
Is there anything we have to do after this hearing to?
Uh, Joan, no?
We'll have to pass an actual resolution, but I didn't know what was gonna go into it yet until we talked here, so...
Okay.
That'll just be a formality at the next meeting.
Oh, perfect.
That, we'll need a copy of the meeting minutes wherever showing that you guys approved it.
Right.
That's the only other thing we need.
Yeah, we can get that for you.
And I think the terminology has to state that you're voting on charitable gambling, the proof of charitable gambling, for the launch.
Okay. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried. Next item on the agenda is application by the Starbuck Fire Department to continue pull tab gambling at the water's edge, so... Do you need a motion for that, Gary, or? Yeah, I think this is just because of the change of ownership. Is that right?
Are you?
I believe so, yeah. That's what we're looking for, yeah.
Are you looking at the resolution, approving the resolution under new business?
Oh, I, yeah, we can wait until new business, I guess. But the Starbucks Fire Auxiliary is, is going to continue gambling at the water's edge. With the change of ownership, we have to, you know, approve that, so... I'm sorry, next on the agenda is Nick Koos from Woodseth.
Hi, this is Nick Koos with Woodseth. I have a couple of things to go over. The twenty twenty project, twenty twenty projects, there was a lift station project down by, down by the campground. The MPCA is gonna do their final visit the first week in July. And then they'll also do the inspection of the MinDOT project at that time, is what Larry said. And then we'll do the closeout after that. Larry had sent some photos to the MPCAs, updating them on the status of, of those projects.
And I know they re, they talked about redoing that approach at Casey's and...
Oh, yep, that's the next thing I'm gonna go over here.
That's...
Yep, so for the MinDOT project, Larry had asked for a schedule on when they were gonna be replacing the pavers and doing the work by Peddler Dan's and the bit by Casey's. And he hadn't heard back from them yet, so he's not sure on the timing, but MinDOT was hoping for sometime in June for them to get started on that, so...
So sometime before closeout.
Yes, exactly, yep. Yeah, because if they don't get to that, then they won't close out until that work is complete, probably, so... So that's the MinDOT project. Next item is the Broadway Street, Pope Street, Teagan Street pavement project. We'll be, we're collecting data now and compiling it to per, to prepare the cost estimate and preliminary engineering report for adding pavement and curb and gutter on those streets, on Broadway from Bennett to Teagan, on Pope from the alley south of Broadway to Eighth, and on Teagan from Seventh to Eighth. Per the ordinance, it'll be a thirty-six foot wide street with curb and gutter. We anticipate we'll need some storm sewer in the area to manage drainage.
That's my understanding, you got approval to go ahead with that cost estimate?
Correct, yep, we do have approval to do that. So, so we're working on getting that ready. Currently, there is no sidewalk, so we weren't going to be adding sidewalk unless the council would like to entertain that, but... That's, that's what it stands in the, as it stands in the ordinance, is the thirty-six foot width and then curb and gutter, so... That's that. And then, the next thing to talk about is the pavement management, pavement management services that we offer. I'll kind of give you the highlights, I know Gary and Joan have seen, watched the video. I don't know if the rest of the council has seen the presentation that we have, we have an online one. We can also do a formal presentation at a work session, too, if you'd like, but I'll kind of give you the quick, quick version. So the pavement management plan, you'd basically take all of the streets and put them into GIS, and then we would identify the roads by owner, so there's some roads that are county-owned, some roads that are state-owned, and then the rest of the roads are locally owned by the city of Starbucks. And then we rate the streets by condition, one to six, one being they're very good and don't need any work, two, six is a complete recon, or gravel, no pavement, and five is a complete reconstruct, and then various ratings in between. And the idea behind it is to generate CIP and pavement management, so you can, can know what your costs would be to, to maintain the pavement. And I think the, the biggest trick is to identify those roads that are in the, that are in kind of the middle range and do an overlay or a maintenance-type project so that it doesn't get to a reconstruct or reclaim-type project, which is gonna be three, three times as much for cost. So if you can stay ahead of it, the roads haven't digressed too much, if you do the maintenance on them first, then that can extend the life of the pavement for, for, for a lot less money. And then the other thing that comes out of it is you get an idea of what your annual cost to, to maintain the pavement actually is.
So there's a video on that?
There is a video available, or we can do a in-person presentation as well, yep.
Joan, do you have a site?
You know, I think my link might have expired, wasn't it only good for a couple weeks?
You know, I'm not for sure, I don't think Larry copied me on that one, but...
I'll check, and I'll forward it if it's still good, otherwise we might just need a new one.
Okay, yep, I can get that to you, too, that's no problem. And then I'm gonna add one more thing to quickly talk about. I did take a look at the, how the turf is doing on the trail project, and there's still some areas that look pretty patchy, so I'm gonna get ahold of Ferguson Brothers, shake the tree, and get them down here to, to fix up those areas that are still looking pretty sparse. And then, once they do that, then we can get that project button up as well. All right. Any other, any questions on any of this?
This bid that we have in front of us, is this for part of, of the project?
It's not.
It's not, okay. Sorry.
No problem.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you, Nick.
Yep, thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have Harvey Peterson, I don't know if you wanted to update us, Harvey, on, on what you've done, so...
As per your request last month, I, I sent out twenty, twenty letters to the people that Joan had sent them out to. So far, I've received eleven responses. Eight are in favor of it, and three are not in favor of it, and that's for several reasons. One of them wrote you a little note, there you can read it, and, but the, the other eight are all, all in favor of it, and wanna get it done, so... Out of the eight here, one of them has two parcels up there, and he voted yes. And one of them sent, sent their response back without a signature on it. They checked yes, and then sent it back without the signature, but even without that, we've got seven, which is more than thirty-five percent, so... And there'll be more, our neighbor across the street has been on vacation, and he hasn't gotten his back to me, but I've talked to him, and he's definitely in favor of it, so...
Are those copies for us?
You can have all of these here, I, I didn't make copies for myself, so...
Oh, okay, we, we can make copies of them, so... And, yeah, I'll get copies back to you, and, yeah, and Woodseth is already working on a cost estimate, so...
That's good, that's good.
So I think we're, you know, it's in progress.
Good, because Teagan Street is washed out again, every time it rains, it washes out, so... And there's bus, school buses, and the mailman, and the garbage truck, and a lot of traffic on that road. So something needs to be done.
Okay, thank you, Harvey.
All right.
Next on the agenda is we have Lynn Slieter, is Lynn here?
Good evening, members of the city council. My name is Lynn Slieter, and I reside at two oh one West Broadway Street, right here in Starbucks. And I was first going to pass these out at the end, but I think I'm gonna pass them out now, so you can look at them while I'm speaking. I'm before you tonight to ask for your assistance in having my neighbor at two oh five West Broadway Street, who I know of as Jay Leverson, get his yard cleaned up. The grass on his yard is currently knee-high or maybe even higher, I'm sure there's places that are about three feet high. I moved into my house eight and a half years ago, and in that, at that time, I've seen maybe two snakes on my yard. But in the past two years, I've lost count of this, all the snakes that I have seen. I even had to remove one from inside my house. And all of them are on the west side of my property, which borders his yard. And yesterday, the neighbor to his, the west of his house, she was planting in her garden, and she had to quit due to the snakes. Another neighbor told me that one night she had left her dog out, it was dark outside, and her dog started acting very different, so she put a light on, and there were three snakes right by her dog. There are also, is also so much garbage on and under and around his deck. Under the deck, it is full of scraps of lumber and empty beer cans. I'm not sure how much more he can fit under there. On his deck, there is an old grill, a car tire, a toilet, a cooler, and much more. There is also junk all on the ground, all around the deck area. I have stuff in my backyard that I want to clean up, but I'm scared to go out there to do it because of the snakes. Also, I want to sit outside in the shade, and the only place I have to do that is on the west side of my house, which faces his, and I don't wanna see it. It's just disgusting. So, and I, like I said, I have these pictures here to show you. If there's anything you can do to get this property cleaned up and the snakes removed or killed, I would greatly appreciate it. Thank you very, so much for your time.
I'll let Joan just update you on what we've done so far, and so...
We actually were out there on June second and sent him a light notice, so...
But from what I...
Tell the fifteenth to respond to that, and then we will go from there.
Okay, but I've understood he's had light notices before and has never done anything.
He's done a minimal amount, yes.
I think in the front yard, he's never done anything in the backyard.
So, anyway, he's got till the fifteenth, and then we want to get next...
I got a question, does he live there?
Yes, he does, we see him go in and out. I don't think he has electricity. I don't think that house is livable, but he is in there.
Is he the owner of the property?
Yes.
Because all you can see through the windows is empty beer cases. It's pretty sad that somebody lives there.
Well, thank you. Next on the agenda is just the mayor's report, and I just wanted to bring up the Krispy Kreme donut fundraiser for new beach equipment, and I, I think we're very close to our goal. We still have a, a request into braying for, for some assistance, and I think they meet on the twenty-third, but I believe the new beach sign should go up on the, on the beach house probably this week, yep, and, and hopefully, the equipment and stuff is on the way, so... Eagle Bank today notified me that they'll donate a thousand dollars to, to help out, and I believe Hanson Communication is also donating a thousand dollars in addition to what was raised at the fundraiser, so... So we're very, very close, so... Next on the agenda is the police report from Mitch Johnson, chief.
Okay, I guess for highlights last, or May, we had two hundred and sixty calls for service. I think it's gone up quite a bit from the previous month since that time of the year. Last month, we get a domestic assault, it's kind of picking up. Fire, then the tornado watch, we were out for that with all the damage. And just to hit on that, is that I think we really gotta look into, and I think, I believe you touched on it, too, but gotta look at getting a, a backup generator for this building. I mean, I don't think, even the tornado sirens weren't even able to go off because we had no power, so... And should this building's a backup emergency response, so if there's a reason why we have to make this an REOC, emergency response center, that we need to have power to the whole building, so... That'd be a, a good priority to, to look at there, so, on that. Is there any just questions for regarding calls for service at all? Nothing? Okay. I do have a couple of things, so I'm looking at, we need, we're gonna probably need a, a new squad here coming up next year. My plan is to keep the two squads we have. The charger has been in the shop almost, I don't know, twice, maybe, I don't know, two or three times a month, from the air conditioning to whatever, something keeps beginning going down, those, two, both cars are running around the clock. Their idle hours are probably, I wanna say over like thirty-five thousand. I mean, it, it's constant, so I, we, we would like to have a third squad, so we can take some, you know, the pressure out these other two squads. And I think just going forward, we're just gonna have to try to keep up with three. It's just too, too hard on the cars, and we have too much time where we are in the shop fixing, and we're down to one squad, and then we get an emergency situation, and we have four officers, and we have one squad. It's just not feasible, so... I would like, just knowing how the rate is for the cars and how to, if you don't order them soon, you will not see them next year. So I'd look and just to see if it, just approval is to start getting quotes and bids and move forward of maybe ordering one, and it'd be for next year's, again, budget, but it'd be, the new squad would, I'm, I'm just guessing, around thirty-two thousand dollars, we'd probably get a Dodge, get a Durango SUV. And then you gotta put in the cost of the outfitting and putting new equipment in, and new, we do need a brand-new camera system in there, so I'm guessing around fifty thousand bucks, around that number would be a...
Total, not on top of the thirty-five, right?
No, that's including, that's including the, the purchase of the car.
On top of it?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, yep. So that's just ballpark, but I'm, I'm sure it'll be, it'll be close to that.
I don't know if Jill understood, it's not in addition to the thirty-five, fifty was...
Yep, so fifty total.
Oh, total, okay.
Yep.
I thought that was just...
Yep, no, fifty total. So that's my, that's my estimate total, it'd be maybe fifty to fifty-five, I don't know, things have gone, we haven't spent... Two years since we've, you know, purchased one, last time, I, I think we spent one forty-five. But I think the squads right now, but if you don't order them this year, you will not see it until two years from now. So it's just a commodity, and then they're just, the build is that far out, so... That's kind of what I'm looking at for that. That's all I got on the squad, I guess, unless, which, if you guys have any thoughts on that? Okay.
Well, that's what I was thinking, too, Chris.
No, yeah, I know, I understand that, but I'm just saying urgency needs, it needs to be there, so...
Kind of have to have an idea in order to put it in the budget anyway, so...
Yep, no, yeah, yep, but I always wanted to plan, like you said, just to move forward and start looking, because we're about that point, so... Okay, and then the next thing I have is just to look at possibly even hiring a, a fifth officer. The part timers, the day of the part timers, I wanna say, is pretty much fizzled. We have part timers, they're all full-time somewhere else. We have Kyle, who's now got a full-time job at somewhere else, he's not working too much. We have a lot of overtime, a lot of overtime, and we don't have anybody that will, and we need vacation time, training time, there's nobody to backfill shifts, and our guys are picking up. I haven't looked at, still compiling the numbers, but I'm just kind of giving you a heads-up, this is probably the, the new wave of law enforcement, is that we're gonna, it would be nice to have a fifth officer to have that role, and even, to even get close to twenty-four hour coverage. We still wouldn't have twenty-four hour coverage with five, would be probably limited to maybe ten hours a week where we'd have call time, but at least you could have that fifth officer to help rotate and fill vacation shifts, and they could swap in and out, because right now, we're still off a weekend. So something, not, not, like I said, I just want something you guys to look at when we get to the budget for next year, when, when I'll bring it up again, we have some more solid numbers. But I just wanted to bring it to your attention, is that right now, we're really struggling to, to get anybody. Right now, I, I went to, I went to the tech and tot for two days, and there's about eighty-some kids there. Out of those eighty, I'd say maybe fifty percent were probably employable. And you have over forty-five, sixty agencies out there hiring. So if you think you're gonna, gonna need part-time help, there's not gonna happen, because they're gonna be gone by the time they, they're already taken, so... I was spoken for. And it's very difficult to compete with any other agencies around here with just the hiring and salaries. It's just, it's very difficult to keep even a part-timer, even full-timer for that matter, but we've been luckily fortunate that we've kept our full timers around here, so... But I know the state is hopefully looking at some type of legislative stuff, the recruitment, because recruitment is so down statewide and nationwide, they're getting us some type of either bonuses or salary bonuses that we can, they can shoot to cities to help us with the hiring process and keeping people. I know that's in the talks, but I, I don't know if it has much legs or not, but it is being talked about, so, because it's a statewide thing. And small agencies are the ones that are really hurting, because we're just getting, the big agencies are eating up all the officers that are out there. So, and we're losing, a lot of the smaller agencies are losing good officers to go to a bigger agency to, for more pay, so... It's a difficult, difficult time. I think Morris, right now, they were down to, they had seven officers, they're down to three. So they're in a rough spot down there, so... But just, I, well, just, I just wanted to bring that up, just because I, again, just to start food for thought, just start thinking about that.
What city was that?
Morris.
Morris?
Yep, so, yeah, they are in enough shape over there, so... Other than that, yeah, I just wanted to leave that, and then I didn't have it on my items, but the uh, the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Twenty-three, um, will be, is having their annual pheasant hunter again and they do their raffle tickets, so they, they have a uh, permit they turned in and I just would need approval to approve the gambling permit for them. It would be on, I think it's the end of October. Should be copies, I have copies of it.
The LG two twenty.
Oh, good. Anybody have any questions on this, or?
Same thing as it was last year, yeah?
Same thing, same thing, yep. Yep, well, we've had for the last, how many years?
I'll make the motion to approve the application for the gambling.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Yeah, we have a motion by Councilman Tafe to approve the application for a gambling permit for the Fraternal Order of Police Glacial Lake Lodge Twenty-three, seconded by Councilwoman Hanson. Is there any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
And then the only thing other I have, it's not even law enforcement related, it's regarding the softball park. So, um, as a, as a volunteer coach, which I've done since two thousand and fourteen and um, I'm part of the Minnewaska Baseball Association. We have, and the school, Minnewaska Area School District, in itself, we have, I don't know how many games of baseball of youth level that are played at that field. And how many times that I've, we have seen and we, and we know that it's, and it has happened where uh, fans have been injured due to fall balls coming through, definitely through the left field baseball side, um, because the fence is only four feet high and it should be eight feet. And the backstop is basically shot and down the right field line where you see the yellow, with those yellow lines, is basically where I'm looking trying to replace, uh, get replaced. Uh, the major, um, so I, what I did is basically uh, went to, I got a quote from Andy's Fence Hall, it's from, from Inglwood. I just asked, I got two quotes, cause I, I don't, I mean, I, I know it's a lot of money for the fix, the whole thing, thing came down to, if you wanted to replace that, those, that whole section between the left field or from basically third baseline to home plate and then from home plate to first baseline and including the backstop was about twenty thousand dollars, over twenty thousand four hundred and forty-seven dollars and twenty cents. Um, I, I think that's a, a priority that we should start putting some money to that, that, that things used by the lot of youth and lot of, uh, agents, I mean, from the association through spring league, summer league, there's stuff going on almost every day of the week there. Um, and then through the school year, when spring hits, you have the uh, high school playing all their games over there, um, the, from seventh to eighth grade. So, I think it, it needs to be updated, uh, before something happens. My thought is if you guys weren't willing to approve anything, I mean, look at at least, but the twenty thousand is to look at at least the left field side where we could improve that up to eight feet. Um, and that quote, second quote isn't there is for uh, seven thousand one hundred and eighty-seven dollars and ninety-one cents. Um, I did also put a, a grant in at the Gladys Ness Spring Foundation for three thousand bucks. Um, I don't know if that's been approved or if we'll get any funding for that, um, to help, you know, subside the costs, but until we, I think it's gonna be, it's just very important for the citywide if just to get that, at least that side fixed, because if eventually someone's gonna get uh, hurt pretty bad and there's gonna be a either a lawsuit or something that's gonna come back on us. That needs to come up because the, the balls come flying over and there's little kids and parents just sitting there and the fans and the players are right there at the fence and it's a, uh, it's, it's, it's a very hazard. And then if we did, even if we did sections, you know, even did maybe that left side, did the, you know, backstop one year and then did whatever, I, I've been trying to look to see if, you know, I went to the MM, Minnesota Baseball Association, they've been putting a lot of money into the field itself, just the upkeep and keeping the field, so they were kind of hesitant to put anything right now. But I think it, it's used, I mean, the city owns it, I, I think we should, we're responsible to, to at least uh, upkeep it. I'm looking also, they're, they're still going through with, they're getting a new scoreboard. Uh, that's gonna be donated by Pizza Ranch. And then I'm also, I'll be going to Fast and I'm see if they'll be willing to donate to brand new flay, uh, foul poles, uh, which they did for the high school, uh, which those are a couple, it's about three thousand bucks to just do that, so. I didn't, you know, the fences, I think is the ma, the left field is the major priority and I don't know. Joan, I, I, we talked, I don't know if, I mean, where the funding would come from that, but I think it needs to be addressed and addressed soon before something does happen.
Yeah, I don't think braying meets until the twenty-third, so.
Okay.
We probably won't know until after that.
Okay.
If your request is approved or not, or whatever.
Yeah, yeah, that, yeah, I don't, yeah, I didn't know how long that will take, I thought usually a little quicker, lesser, but, um, yeah.
Might be good if you did a fundraiser like the, we did for the beach or something.
If I had the time to do it, I would, um, yeah.
Must be some, some fathers out there and stuff.
Oh, yeah, there, there is, I, I mean, it just that, and we're there a lot and it's, it's and with those game, like I said, there's games there every Tuesday, Thursday, uh, practices on Wednesdays, uh, even Mondays, I mean, it's used quite a lot. I just would hate to see, uh, I mean, we've had people get smoked in the head ball with balls many, many times, I mean, before I mean, luckily they come out of it, but it's just a matter of time for something, something bad really happens, so. That's why I'm kind of looking at that, I guess, so.
Yeah, I think, uh, you know, it's something we could discuss, uh, maybe at our next council meeting or something where we have a little more information and stuff and see if there's any other uh, organizations that are willing to chip in or whatever, and uh, so.
Okay.
And we could, you know, like use the VF or something, you know? Like the old days, did the scoop supper or something, you know, advertise for that and get some of the parents to throw in and, you know, you get a lot of money, people coming through that and then we could match something or get some other people.
Yeah, and like I said, I, I'm not, I mean, the, I would love to do the whole thing, but I, I, I like, I, I think the biggest thing this year would at least get that that left field down, that third baseline down. Um, that's just a, it needs to be updated.
Do you have an estimate on that?
That's, that's behind there, yep, so that estimate, there's just two estimates there. The one estimate is the twenty thousand, the other one's for seven thousand one hundred and eighty-seven bucks and that's just for the third base side. So. Okay.
Okay.
That's all I have. Yep.
Okay. Thank you, Mitch. Uh, next on the agenda is the water and sewer department, uh, Randy Peterson.
All right, the first thing I have is Hawkins Chemical, we get all our chemicals for the water and wastewater plant, they have a new policy they adopted, they charge us ten dollars for every cylinder that we have, um, over, I believe it was thirty days, so before we get them emptied, we already have them for over thirty days, not to mention the ones that we have that, the spare one on the scale plus the spare ones waiting to be used. So, last month, I think the bill was a hundred and twenty dollars that we got charged just for tanks that were over the timeframe. I talked to Dan, our chemical guy about it and asked if there was any way around it, and he said not really, the best thing that we could probably look at doing is switching to liquid. So, it'd be liquid bleach and sodium bisulfate at the wastewater plant, um, so we won't have tanks anymore. He said if, if our chlorine gas feed equipment is to the point where it needs to be replaced, which it is, uh, it's twenty-plus years old and it's time to replace it and I think it's twenty thousand dollars to probably replace all the parts for it. That it would probably make a lot of sense to switch over to liquid. Uh, the liquid is more expensive than the gas is, but we don't feed all that much. And for what we would save in the replacement, um, for replacing the gas equipment, it would, it would make sense to switch to liquid. The price for two pumps in a tank was twenty-three hundred dollars to switch to the liquid. I think we should go that route, probably get through this summer, we have to feed uh, chlorine through Octobers, um, so I would just say let's keep using what we're using this year. Pay the, pay the charge and over the winter before next year, when, when we start up, switch over to the liquid bleach and liquid, the liquid sodium bisulfate. I would recommend that we get two pumps of each so that we have a backup on hand, because you can't not feed it if you have a pump go down and some of these pump suppliers, they're, it's like impossible to get parts for them, so we need to have a backup, so.
Is it, is that a viable alternative to chlorine?
It's, it's, it's bleach, it's liquid bleach, right now we feed gas and we mix it with city water, so we're, we're using a lot of city water also that mixes with the gas chlorine to make bleach. So, we're making the bleach through the gas feeding and then we're feeding the bleach into our waste stream. And then the same thing with the sulfur dioxide, which takes the bleach out of the water, the chlorine out of the water, because we can't put chlorinated water into the river because of fish kills and that, so. The chlorine kills the bugs and then you have to take the chlorine out so that you don't kill the fish too, so. That's what this is for. So, I guess I would just like approval to give Dan, our chemical guy, a heads up that we're planning on it, um, I did talk to the MPCA just to see what was all involved with getting their approval and, and everything else for switching chemicals. Uh, there was just some forms I had to fill out, uh, send them my, uh, safety data sheets for the chemicals we're gonna use and it wasn't, it wasn't too difficult, so I think it's something we should probably proceed with for next year.
Sounds like the equipment is very reasonable.
The equipment's very cheap.
What's the cost differential with, between the two?
Um, let me see here. I'm not exactly sure what the chlorine cost per pound, but we're gonna feed about three gallons a day of bleach and one gallon of sodium bisulfate. The bleach is about seven dollars a gallon and the sodium bisulfate is ninety-two cents a gallon, so. I mean, it's yeah, it's, it's not. Yep. Plus, I, I, our gas equipment, it is, it's on borrowed time and I had to re, well, I, we had a, just a little gas meter, it's a glass tube with a little ball in it that says how many gallons you're, or how many pounds you're feeding per day. And just that little piece was six hundred dollars. And the heads are two, three thousand and we've got one of them that I know needs to be replaced, there's a faint odor when it's used, I asked Dan about it and I mean, it's, it's, it's gonna need to be replaced and, I mean, you're looking at twenty-five, thirty thousand to do that. There's, I believe, six parts to every, each system to feed it, so.
Are these new tanks, uh, plastic or?
One of them will probably be like a fifty-five gallon drum and then we'll just set the pump on the drum and feed right out of the drum. Yeah, for the, probably the sodium bisulfate. And the bleach will be, like we do at the water plant where we've got, let's say a, a two hundred gallon tank and there's just a hose, they'll back the truck up to the door and he pulls out a hose, puts it in the tank and turns the pump on in his truck and he just pumps the liquid right in the tank. So, then that would be the tank that we would be purchasing. Uh, I believe the pumps are, we just bought a new pump for the phosphate at the water plant, the same style. I think it was called a stener pump and I think it was like six hundred dollars, so the pumps are very cheap. And you just replace, it's a little chemical tube that you, you replace when a part goes out, that's all there really is to it.
Sounds like it's less parts.
It's a lot less parts, so. And if you've got an extra, extra pump and let's say I'm, I'm gone, you know, have it, you have, have an extra pump ready to go, so let's say Mike just hooks up two hoses to the pump and plugs it in and it's ready to go, so. It's a lot less headache. So.
Is there any questions or anything? I, otherwise I'd make a motion that we proceed to, with that plan to do that this fall.
Okay, I'll let MPCA know and get the paperwork going and let them know that next year we'll probably be switching over to liquid then.
Do we need a motion on that, Joan, or?
You made, did you make the motion?
I made a motion.
I'll second that.
Okay. So, I have a motion by a mayor to approve the proceeding with that plan to replace the chlorine gas with uh, bleach and sodium sulfate. Seconded by Councilman Tafe. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
All right, I also have some quotes here. I just received them today, so I didn't get much time to go through them, but um, one of them is from Budget Bargain Incorporated. They do uh, crack sealing that, or, okay. Yep, I guess I would like the approval. They did some work for us probably five, six years ago. Did a lot of the crack sealing and that. I would like the approval to have them, um, do the crack sealing and replace the mastic gap. I think it was roughly about twelve blocks, does that look about right?
Yeah, the crack ceiling, yeah.
Uh, it'd be Fifth Street from Wallin to John, Hagenson.
Yeah, Hagenson, I got that.
From uh, Fourth to West Broadway. West Eighth Street from John for the first block.
Yep.
And then John Street from Ninth to Broadway. And John from Depot Lane to West Sixth Street. Um, they quoted eighteen thousand five hundred dollars, um, to do a crack repair. So, you, you grind it out and then you put
Just like we did before, yeah.
In the cracks to seal them. And then, uh, the mastic repair, this is for, uh, the North Shore Drive in Abercrombie, so right out here, the full length of both.
Yeah, it's the real dipped crack, so you drive and you can and we put the mastic on, a two lifts on application to bring the ride back and then to save the road that's starting up. When it starts to dip, your base is deteriorating underneath and then that's when the potholes really start to form, so. Do this before that gets to that point.
So, you just add a, a leveller or do you?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a rubberized product with a rock in it. We go, we clean it out, we put, uh, put a primer down. Then we put one lift down, let it cool, let it shrink, let it seep down into the crack and fill the void. And we come back with another level over the top of it to bring the ride back.
So, I guess I, I feel this is very important to do, just to kind of save the good roads that we have, kind of like Nick had talked about the study. These guys kind of did the study for us and took a look at the town and said these are the blocks that need to be done. I feel it's, be a great cost savings in the future. Their, the quote for the two, for the crack sealing and the repair was twenty-four thousand four hundred and ninety-five dollars. I also feel, I also got a quote from Morris Seal Coat to do, um, a chip seal on the road where they put the liquid tar down and then they put like crush granite and that on it and let it stick and kind of come back and sweep it off. Their price is based on, on blocks, so like zero to ten blocks would be two dollars and seventy-five cents a square yard. And eleven to twenty blocks would be two dollars and fifty cents a square yard. Let's say ten blocks would be roughly thirty-eight thousand five hundred. I guess I would, I would suggest doing at least ten blocks to do, to get the two dollars and fifty cents a square yard and let's say eleven blocks and just kind of look, look at the roads and go around with them and pick out the ones that would be in the most need. And do that also kind of with this project, just to prolong the life of our roads. And do that also kind of with this project, just to prolong the life of our roads that are still in good shape.
Is there any um any plans for all the hill roads that come down from on to Seventh? Amber Crombie, Bingham, Hope, like all of those?
Those need a complete rebuild. They need, there's a lot that need a complete rebuild, but this money with the crack sealing and the the seal coating, it'd be sixty-three thousand dollars. That would be to pr- um save the roads that are in good shape, like all the roads that are less than ten years old to keep that from happening to them. So I mean, sixty-three thousand, that would redo maybe a block and a half or two blocks. And right now, we're looking at at saving twenty-plus blocks for this sixty sixty-three thousand, so.
And how long does estimated? I know you can't give a exact, but so that'll give us another ten years or another five years or?
It depends on the maintenance.
And all that stuff, I understand, but.
And road base has a lot to do with it.
The road base, if you do the proper maintenance, you can keep extending the life of that pavement. You know, without even having to put an overlay on it for thirty-plus years with the technologies that we have today.
Well, like the roads that you guys sealed or crack sealed six years ago? I mean, a lot of it, it still looks pretty good. It held in there quite nice and it did a lot to save the road and the the chip seal kind of it it puts a new coat on, so like when you go over with the snowplow and that, it's wearing on fresh granite rather than shaving off your road. So it, you know, it prolongs the life of that also, so. I guess we we haven't spent very much out of the road budget for the last three or four years, just because of the road project. We didn't, we didn't know what we were kind of in for, so the roads kind of got neglected the last few years, but I think it's time now to you know, come up with this and at least do this much for now and protect the roads we have.
And the combined cost is sixty-some?
Sixty-two thousand nine hundred ninety-five. That was for the zero to ten blocks. I would suggest doing an extra block and saving twenty-five cents a square yard. I guess I'm not exactly sure what it comes out to, but it's gonna be a fair amount of savings. That's a pretty big area, so.
What's the budget look like, Joe?
Well, we do have money in the budget for tarring. I'd have to grab a copy of the budget to remember how much.
Yeah, I didn't get a chance to meet with you before this and kind of see where the budget was at, but I know there was I want to say there was like twenty thousand, twenty-five thousand left last year at the end of the year that didn't get used out of tarring too, but.
Just something that's time sensitive as far as getting it done or?
Well, it's.
It's probably good to give you guys a heads up before you get filled up to.
Well, well, that and we're const- this year is crazy. We're constantly seeing price increases, so it's you know, I know Al Morris Seal Coat, he's, I mean, he'll go get two different price increases in one day. So and ours are about dang near once a week, you know, plus the fuel, so.
I guess I'm thinking that we need to, you know, it's a big expense, so we kind of need a little time to put it all together and see where we're really at with the budget and and that's.
We can, you know, always do a transfer from another fund if we choose to do that. We have some reserves and a couple of economies.
But I we haven't done anything really on any roads past few years, so I I think it's worth going forward with it, because like I said, everybody's seen price increases and anything petroleum-based is gonna just keep going on.
If it wasn't necessary, I wouldn't ask for it either. I feel it's probably something we should probably move forward with.
I think what Seth is saying too is, you know, with their pavement management uh plan. You know, if you do something when they're stage uh two or three. You know, you save probably uh half the cost.
Yup. Cause you want to do two blocks, you want you want to replace two blocks for sixty-two thousand. I mean, we're we're saving twenty-some, so.
Eleven.
Plus the plus the seal coating, the seal coating was twelve and the seal coating was ten, so. I mean, you're looking at twenty-some blocks. And this is including both. Both quotes from both companies. It sounds like you and Al work together quite a bit on projects like this.
Well, I agree with Chris. I think we better get Brock in here.
I guess I'd make a motion that we move forward with this.
And I'll second that.
So we have a motion by Councilman Tafe to uh move forward uh with the uh both contracts and seconded by
Proposals, if you would like to see.
Proposals uh and.
I've got a copy of the, I've got of the Morris Seal Coat, so I'll read that.
Did you want to read the blocks off or?
Yeah, I guess the ma- uh is this the total blocks here?
Yes, that was in my head. I kind of had.
So five, six, ten, twelve, twelve blocks. Plus the seal coating would bring it up to twenty blocks or?
Yeah, I'd I'd like to do eleven blocks for the seal coating, just to get save that twenty-five cents a square yard. Yup.
So, but they're not the same blocks.
No, they won't be the same blocks. I'll I'll go around with Alan.
So it'd be about a total of twenty-three blocks.
Yup.
Okay. So I have a motion by, I hope I state this right. Correct me if I'm wrong. So we have a motion to go ahead with uh the uh repair of twelve blocks, uh crack repair and and that's uh by Bargain and uh and seal coating, another eleven eleven blocks for a total of twenty-three blocks and a total cost of sixty-some thousand dollars and seconded by Councilwoman Balko. Uh is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried, so thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. We'll probably do a mastic, I'm guessing. Maybe even next.
Okay.
Find a way back up to Norman County and then Grand Forks.
Okay, sounds good. Well, thanks for getting that together for us.
No problem. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't know if you'll have this back in here.
Our old docks that we took out of Hobo or the Hobo Park Marina, I posted them on Craigslist a couple of times. Gotten a lot of questions and responses on them. We've gotten rid of probably at least half of them, so they're moving, which is great. Um I think I've got a couple more loads going out tomorrow or the next couple of days, so. Glad to see somebody can use them. Uh as most of you have heard, we had a tornado that took the roof off the wastewater plant. Took some steel off some other buildings and a lot of trees and that. Uh we did get prices. Uh Keith Kirkwald was the lowest. Twenty-four thousand five hundred dollars to replace the steel on the roof and uh north side of another building. Took some flashing off and took some fiberglass sheets off of uh another building, so. Um I did call him today and let him know that he was the the lowest and told him to.
That that include anything on the shop or the trim or?
Yup, that was everything. That was, that's everything at the wastewater plant that was pulled off and that's replacing the entire or all the steel on the wastewater plant roof itself, so. So I believe it got turned into insurance already, um so. So everything should be good to go with that, just kind of giving you a heads up. Uh the water is really high in the marina. We've actually have, we have twelve-foot poles that the docks are floating over the top of them, because the poles aren't long enough, so spent a lot of time last week pulling poles out and moving them back to the middle holes in the dock rather than the end holes, just so we don't end up losing poles, so. If people are wondering why their poles aren't on the end of the docks anymore, that is the reason why. So I guess I haven't heard any complaints yet, but.
No, I haven't either, but.
I can, the water can start going down anytime. So that's all I've got. Has anybody got any questions for me?
Just going back, can we do a motion to accept that bid for the wastewater plant?
Oh, yup, sorry.
A motion to accept that bid from Kirkwell Construction.
I'll second that.
Yeah, we have a motion by uh the Councilman Hanson to approve the uh bid from Kirkwell Construction to repair the wastewater pan- plant and the uh next door building. Uh seconded by Council Councilman Tafe and uh any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh next on the agenda is uh the fire department. Doug Noes and Chief Doug Noes and Paul Hippie, so.
Okay, so with our lovely weather we've been having lately, we've discussed and decided that we wanted to try and pursue having a whistle or a tornado siren, I guess. So we did go out and get some bids. The siren we have, we went to blow it on the first storm and there's no power, so we had no siren. Uh there's no backup for that at all, so. We did a little research. Paul's actually been all doing all the research on as far as replacing the one we have. It's very, very old. Um can't get parts for it anymore and stuff like that, so when it goes, it's gonna go. So I guess we'd like to try and move forward a little faster than you know, before it's done, I guess, and so I can let Paul talk a little bit about that. I did get you guys all the papers for it. The first one's the bid for it and then the second page is actually the existing siren, how far out it goes. And then the third page is actually the the one is if, and that's if we relocated it to the fire hall. And then the inside ring is the cheaper siren and then the bigger ring is the one we actually priced out, so. I can let Paul talk a little bit about the bid and go from there.
So second page, is that the current?
That's the current one, yeah.
The second page is a current siren if they're located right here. And so that one actually is not big enough for the city of Starbuck the way it is, no. So the one that we're looking at would be the outside line of that second page of the map, which is about a mile radius. Um that blue line is actually another siren that stepped down from this. It's blue online. It's the second circle in there, yeah. So it's the, it'd be the smaller circle of the two. Is a next model smaller, which he just put it in there to show that that will not do the power it needs for the city. Federal kind of says they have a standard of seventy decibels at the outside of that line. And what they're doing is they're taking into account wind, rain, so if it's a nice calm day, you might hear the siren a lot further than a mile away, which you probably will. So the new one that we're proposing or they're proposing is a mile radius, which you can kind of see gets outside of town in a little ways. Yeah, the other one was about a fifteen, the older one that's there now is about a fifteen hundred feet radius, so. Um that was more back, he said, when you had the old you know, for the chemical warfare and stuff like that is why they had the, that siren there, it wasn't made for tornadoes and stuff like that. The quote you can see in front of you is um everything included to put it up except for bringing the power from the building to that siren. Which would depend on where in location we put it. If it would be down here, uh they also, I did give them the coordinates to the water tower to see if it would work up there also. There's um for an area, but that might get too high, because he said you can get too high and then it overbl- or overruns the town and you don't hear it. So. And this siren here is gonna be different than the one we have for loudness. If you're standing underneath it, it's not gonna be very loud until you get further out because of the horn. And it's, they put it, it's based on a fifty-foot pole and they supply that and it's got about an eight-foot berry, so it's gonna be roughly forty-two feet plus the sirens, it's about forty-five feet in the air roughly to make the span out. This one here is an AC-only siren, so we would have to then when we put a backup generator, which would work on both. It's a little over three grand more if you want to do the AC/DC. But then every few years, you gotta replace the batteries in them at six, seven hundred bucks for all of them. So and it's gonna be a little more upkeep. The only thing that wouldn't be included in this is in the adaptive decide if you want to keep it is the noon um whistle. We'd have to get a timer box for this that would work with this, this siren. And this is actually also, this one will be able to be um set off from dispatch. So we don't have to say, you know, this like this last storm was kind of a late, because they base it off of Chan Hassen when they put us in the warning. Well, sometimes it gets so late, by the time we get down here, go blow a siren, it's kind of too late, so this way they can actually activate that siren. At any time of the day.
Being a couple of blocks away from it is pretty tough. By the time I send someone down to to blow it off, I mean, it's seconds and minutes can be very, very important to me.
It's about like it.
Yup.
So dispatch, dispatch could activate it without your.
It's all I have to do is say.
If they feel it's, hey, we're gonna put the siren off, we're gonna do it now as we're paging you guys. And that's happened other times. I remember driving into town and you see funnel clouds in the sky and
Sure.
So it's a little bit of money, but it's something that I we feel that kind of a joint thing between the siren and the generator that kind of needs to be done.
They do too.
Yeah.
I mean, I not everybody listens to the radio all the time. Not everybody has TV anymore.
Cell phone thing is pretty nice, but yeah, it doesn't give immediate danger.
So you don't get the activation on that anymore, so.
Yeah, after that first storm, that it didn't go off or we couldn't get it to go off because there's no power. By the time we got down there, the power was off. And talking to Mitch after that, we were, we said it's something we should probably look into getting a new one and getting generator backup at the whole facility too, so.
And you you'll probably see that actually on that circle.
It's a lot louder if you blow it.
Further this way, but on that circle, yeah, you're right on the edge of being able to hear it. And with that, you know, that's, they're saying a mile at seventy decibels, but actually that horn they actually can go out at sixty decibels out there, thirteen hundred, thirteen thousand feet. So that's darn near two miles, a little over, about two miles. So like he said, you might have it, if it's not really windy, but most times when the storm's coming, it's gonna be windy, but so and it looks like, you know, they're out, looks like probably eight, ten weeks just to get the stuff, so. It's something that would take a little bit of time to get. And this quote is good for, looks like sixty days.
Well, I say let's get it.
Is there, there a generator set up on this at all?
This is, this price is not, this is solely having power all the time by, you know, we kind of coordinate between the two, having a generator here and that. Otherwise, we're gonna have to for a little over three grand.
Do AC/DC.
You'd have to do an AC/DC, which has got battery power to it. Which, like I say, you're gonna have every few years.
Nope, that's an additional.
So I have the other one here, because there's more, we're trying to push not having all that upkeep of of having to change batteries on them and stuff like that.
Yeah, generator, I'm to run this whole place, I bet it's gonna be fifty, sixty thousand.
Yeah. Because you're gonna want something that can take the whole building and not just piecemeal. Because you're gonna want something that can take the whole building and not just piecemeal certain things.
It might get more complicated to divide parts of it, you know. And then, if we're gonna use this for, Mitch's gonna use it for command center, you know, stuff like that too. I mean, if it's hot, you're gonna want AC. If, you know, we're using this for mass calist- type thing, you need to have, you know, that as well, so.
You could have, the town could be out for a week.
Yeah, three, four, five days.
Elderly people at a hundred and some degrees, they need a place to, yeah, they can't stay here, but they need a place to get in once in a while, or.
Sure.
You got Red Cross here, they need a place for, or in the dead of winter, if it's cold and you gotta, I mean, it doesn't usually happen as much in the winter, but you never know. You could have a ice storm that knocks down all the poles, but.
We didn't have time to get together the, the generator proposal, but we're working on it. Scott's been here a few times and working on stuff, but. So, I just wanted to get this in front of you and let you know we're working on that too, but.
Just probably takes some time to get to.
It says eight to ten weeks, but I'm assuming it'd be, be longer than that, but.
Because then they have a crew that comes in and installs it. So, we have to do a supply power to it, which I'm thinking a couple thousand should, depending on where the location of it is too.
So.
When you said that would be above us here?
That, that's off of this location.
That's off of that, so then it can be tied, if we get a generator, all that can be tied together in one area.
That makes sense.
It's a wood pole, huh?
Yep, it's a class-two wood pole, so it's different, they class them different. That's pretty much all. So, this siren here actually will look like the same when you're going to Glenwood, the turnoff to go to Captain's. Right there in the corner, Long Beach, has pretty much the same siren. And this is, this guy is based out of Rochester, it's Federal Warning Systems, which is a pretty big company. I don't think there's actually that many siren companies out there.
No, I was Googling here, I didn't see a bunch, but.
Will they look at any of the places where our state, where our generators are, like by Big Bad Ours House or the wastewater plant? So, we could hook up the generators that automatically do that?
They can. I would just have to give them coordinates. It just depends on, I was gonna look at the map here. You know, the further you get that way, now your circle gets moved south more.
Yeah, but if you have to pay a little bit more for a siren, it might be cheaper than buying a complete generator, you know. Let's say you get a bigger siren and you pay five thousand dollars more versus fifty thousand for a generator. You know, it might be a cost savings too.
Yeah, it just depends on, we still need to.
Yeah, the building still should have one being the second backup.
Backup command center. I mean, if we had something happen this last storm, we would be.
Because, yeah, Tim Riley came over too and we were talking.
I think it's a good point, you know, what you brought up too, if, you know, if the electricity goes out for any length of time and elderly people need someplace to.
Paul's putting in one at his house, we can all go there too, but.
Yeah, it's a big cost upfront to look at, but it's something that, you know, that if it's taken care of, it's gonna last.
Now, there's so many different options if you want natural gas or diesel and just different things, so we'll have to get, get together on that, but.
Well, I think we definitely need a new siren.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make the motion to go ahead with ordering the new siren. I'll second that.
Which, are we doing the AC or AC/DC?
Uh, just the AC only would be my recommendation.
Nothing, yeah, at this point, so. So, we have a motion by Councilman Tafe to go ahead with ordering a new siren and, as proposed, seconded by Councilwoman Balkal. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pause, same sign. Motion carried. So, thank you.
The only other thing I have is the new firefighters we did put on. They are all through firefighter one and passed their tests and everything, so we're gonna go. So, glad to have that full force, so. You guys have anything else or?
Yeah, we'll look forward to some news on generator.
Okay, yep, we'll get that. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
I don't know, do you have anything to tell them or anything, so? Uh, I don't think there's anything. So, we'll move on to new business. First item is to approve Resolution 2022-12 to allow the Starbuck Fire Department auxiliary lawful gambling permit at the Waters Edge under new ownership.
I'll make the motion to approve Resolution 2022-12. I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Tafe to approve Resolution 2022-12 allowing the Starbuck Fire Department auxiliary lawful gambling permit at the Waters Edge under new ownership, seconded by Councilwoman Balkal. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pause, same sign. Next item on the agenda is to discuss a transition to the Neptune 360 cloud-based platform for utility meter reads. And I don't know, Joan, if you wanna fill the council in or if Randy?
Yeah, I mean, it's the system that does our reading of our, all our water meters, our utility meters in town. And what we have now is gonna be obsolete in 2023, so we kind of have to move to this new platform. She was in and did a demo of it, and it had some nice features that are gonna be a lot easier to use than what we currently have. So, it's something we're gonna have to do in the next year and a half. It's just whether we want to do it now. The current bid for this is eleven thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars and, you know, it's.
Well, I'm thinking it's not gonna get any cheaper.
Yeah, it's gonna be the next one.
Or we won't be able to even get it.
Right, and the closer you get to that expiration.
Unless it come out of our, come out of our water fund?
It would probably be split between water and sewer.
Water and sewer, yeah. So, and those funds are in good shape right now, so.
I'll make a motion to accept the Ferguson Water Works upgrade to the new 360 cloud-based platform.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilwoman Hanson to approve the transition to the Neptune 360 cloud-based platform for utility meter reads, seconded by Councilwoman Tafe. Any further questions, discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pause, same sign. Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is to discuss a lease for the environmental drop site with Pope Douglas Joint Solid Waste Management Board. I think that was in your packet.
There is a copy in there, and it's something that was sent to Tom Jacobson, our city attorney, to just get his opinion on. And he didn't have time to get it back to us for this council meeting, so I don't know if we wanna wait or.
Well, I'd like to get going on it as soon as possible and, so. I would say if Tom gives us the go-ahead to send it on to, send it on to Pope Douglas Solid Waste.
I'll make that a motion that we move forward the lease agreement to Pope Solid Waste as long as Tom approves it. I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Tafe to move forward with the lease with Pope Douglas Solid Waste Management for the environmental drop site, conditional upon the approval of our city attorney. Seconded by Councilwoman Balkal. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pause, same sign. Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is to approve additional part-time summer help for Parks and Streets Department. We have an applicant, Alex Panitsky, that can come to work next Monday. And we would start him out at fourteen dollars an hour. And he's gonna be helping with the watering of the flowers and doing a lot of the other work with the, you know, with the Parks and Streets Department to get cleaned up for Heritage Days and picked up, so. It's.
Has anybody interviewed him?
I'm sorry?
Has anybody interviewed him? Somebody sat down?
I've talked to him, yeah.
Okay, so you know.
And, well, Austin Prestige used to work with us and, and now his brother Aaron's working with us, and they're neighbors with Panitsky, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
He's a good kid.
Good kid.
I say let's get him. You find somebody that wants to work, you better grab him, so. So, I'd just like approval to go ahead with that from the council, so.
I'll make the motion to hire Alex Pan-
Panitsky?
Yeah, Panitsky. I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Tafe to go ahead with the hiring of additional part-time summer help, Alex Panitsky, seconded by Councilwoman Balkal. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pause, same sign. Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is discussion on hand-pulling stary stonewort and millfoil in the marina, per the quote from Waterfront Restoration, so. And I don't know if we heard anything from Pope County Land Resource Management, were you?
No, nothing new. We have a twenty-thousand-dollar grant from last year that we didn't receive until 2022, so it's something we would use towards that.
This is just a handful, right?
Yes. And they're hoping the millfoil would be way less expensive than the quote because it's nothing like it was last summer. But he quoted it based on what they experienced last year.
Did, did they ever get back to us on whether they needed a permit?
He said he would get back to me if they did, and he didn't, so we shouldn't need a pre-survey.
Pre-survey?
But we'll again verify it when I, if I talk tomorrow.
Okay.
This is due to start six-twenty?
Um, that's when they had an opening.
Okay.
Otherwise, it'd be put off for some time, I guess.
It just creates more problems.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to move forward with the hand-pulling of stary stonewort and millfoil.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Tafe to move forward with the pulling of stary stonewort and millfoil in the marina, per the quote from Waterfront Restoration, seconded by Councilwoman Hanson. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pause, same sign. Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is to approve a public hearing for a variance request for a new home on parcel twenty-seven dash zero-six-three-six-two-four-seven and twenty-seven dash zero-six-three-six-dash-zero-zero-six on South Shore Drive. Dan and Don Jepma. I guess the variance would be, because for the setback in the lot line and the, and the small increase in the allowed lot coverage or whatever, so.
So, are they looking to keep it as two? Because that one is kind of a weird, like a triangle, or do they wanna make it all one?
Well, they're gonna build the house, the new house, on the exact same footprint that's there now. It's just gonna go via two-story house.
Okay.
Then they would add the garage to the back towards the road. And that would be the additional structure.
Got it.
And then, with all that and the decks, the lot coverage is, well, it's more than the twenty-five percent allotted by the shoreland ordinance. So, we would, they would need a variance for that.
How much more?
What did it come to, Tiffany? Was it like thirty-one point something percent?
Yeah, I believe it was thirty-one point five.
Yeah. Our ordinance for, the city says thirty percent, but the shoreline is twenty-five percent. And then, if there's a variance, it has to be run by the DNR, so.
But right now, we're just looking for a public hearing.
Yes.
Proposal. That'd be for the next council meeting?
In July, yes.
July, okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the public hearing for a variance on parcel two-seven dash zero-six-three-six-dash-two-four-seven and parcel number two-seven dash zero-six-three-six-dash-zero-zero-six. I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Tafe to approve a public hearing for a July council meeting for a variance request for a new home on parcel twenty-seven dash zero-six-three-six-dash-two-four-seven and twenty-seven dash zero-six-three-six-dash-zero-zero-six on South Shore Drive, seconded by Councilwoman Balkal. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pause, same sign. Motion carried. Next item, final item on the agenda is a wastewater proposal, and we kinda talked about that.
Yeah, I think we made all the approvals we made before.
So, we're covered on that, and so. That's it for the agenda and so, we have a motion to adjourn.
Will we adjourn?
We have a motion by Councilman Tafe to adjourn. We are adjourned. Thank you.